Let's begin. Senator Yamashita, we're still on your Bill 203. I believe we left off with Senator Mubeni and her proposed amendment. Senator Mubeni, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to submit an amendment to Bill Number 203, in particular, specific to Page Three, adding another item, Item Number Seven, on Line Eighteen, below Item Number Six. It should read, it would read, "No political sign shall be posted on Oceanside location on public easements or public property." Fairly simple, and that's so that we retain the views that our people and our visitors would enjoy as they drive by. And also, sometimes, we have recreational or public beaches or whatnot that in past elections have been marred by various political signs, and I think it's a shame that we don't get to see our ocean view during that time of the year or that time of the season. So I'd like my colleagues to consider this particular amendment.
Thank you very much. Senator Guthard.
Mr. Speaker, just a clarification, if the sponsor or if the sponsor of the amendment could clarify. This would only be on public property? If someone has a house that has an ocean view, they can still put a sign they want?
The entire bill only encompasses public property. We have no, unless we're going to be doing control over private property right now, all we're doing, this entire bill, is just public property.
And another clarification, Mr. Speaker. Okay, ocean view. Now, what if the ocean view is a thousand feet away from the road? Say, you're on Marine Drive, let's say, or you're in somewhere where there is an ocean and there is a view, but it's like a thousand feet away or two thousand feet away, huh? Yeah, Pago Bay overlook is an example. The ocean is not adjacent to the location, but it's very, very far away. Does that mean you can't put a sign there? I'd like some clarification, because there's no technical guidelines, formula, number of feet, or anything like that that's indicated in the amendment.
I believe the view, the word is ocean view as opposed to Oceanside, but I'll allow the proponent of the amendment to yield.
Thank you. That is a good point, and I believe I put down Oceanside. And to clarify, perhaps, in order to give better clarification, I would be willing to have the amendment be reworded, "No political sign shall be posted on Oceanside within a hundred yards of, yeah, within a hundred yards of Beachside or Oceanside."
I would recommend a hundred feet. If I may, to the sponsor.
But my question then is, we have, like, for instance, Assam Beach Park, which is a beautiful beach park, and I've seen signs along that side as well. So that a hundred feet would only just be within the middle of the park, and we have our main artery over a hundred feet. So that's why I'm giving it that extension.
Senator Panglinen. Just a point of information, there's already a restriction on placing signs on public parks.
Yeah.
So you cannot, so that when you say you're seeing a sign at Assam Public Beach Park, that is just a matter of enforcement. It's not a matter of the law, it's a matter of enforcement. No signs can be posted in public parks.
I understand. However, however, what I'm talking about are the signs that are along the roads that happen to be beside the park. I don't believe the easements are part of the park. The main intention of this is that along the main roadways, which is where most signs are placed, are not put in a way that would obstruct our ocean views, our, excuse me, yeah, our scenic views. So I'm willing to put a hundred feet.
I think that would work better, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That's my recommendation.
Anybody, thank you. Do you have anything else, Senator Guthard? On the amendment. There's an objection. Anybody wish to speak? There being an objection on the Mubeni amendment of Oceanside within a hundred feet. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Anybody else wish to speak on the bill? Senator Panglinen.
Thank you, Ensidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, we're kind of treading on what I consider to be some fairly delicate constitutional issues here with regards to what we're proposing, with regards to limiting what I call, what I would classify as protected speech, which is political speech within the framework of our Constitution. And the restrictions can occur, but they have to be reasonable and rational, and when they don't overly impose a burden on one party versus another party. And I look at it, and, you know, and why are we trying to do this? If we had the government enforce the law, then I don't think that these, the issue we're trying to resolve with this is that huge of a problem, and that it can't be resolved under the present legal framework that we have that limits campaign signs. And what does this mean when you limit the ability of these signs? Who does it favor? We know it's going to favor the incumbents, because we know that the two things that increase anyone's chance of success in the political process is, one, money, it's the first thing, and secondly, it's name recognition. So who has name recognition? Of course, the incumbents have recognition. Individuals who are, who have money will increase their chance for name recognition with the money that they spend on advertising and so forth. And so what we're doing here, I think, is we're tilting a little bit, and this is my perspective on this, we are tilting now the chances of the regular individual being able to successfully campaign if he can't raise the money and he can't get name recognition. And is it really that onerous that we have this six to twelve weeks of signs? Why don't we just shorten the sign period to four days? That'll get rid of these signs real quick, and everybody will be on equal footing. Why don't we, because now what you still have is individuals who can raise the money can put huge signs on private property. And individuals who are not well-connected, who don't have the money, now can't pay somebody on private property to put up signs. Believe me, that's what's been happening in some instances, is people are being paid in the private property to put up signs, and who can pay them? People with money. People who can raise money from business interests, who want to have access to the senators in here. We are looking at, just take a look at what's happened in the United States with regards to the most recent Supreme Court case. You know, so to say that we're going to just make things better, yeah, maybe, but at what cost to the average individual who wants to participate in our political process, in our government, put himself forward and spend, not have to spend a hundred and two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars his first time out to get elected? Now, all of the money's going to go to KUAM, K-57, PDN, and a variety. And we don't have the money to do that. Signs are the least expensive way of getting something across to the general public in the political process, because you can pay two thousand dollars for ten signs, and they're up there for three to four, six weeks if you're campaigning, and we already have a six-week window before you can put signs up on government property. So again, it's this free speech, protected speech, and are we really, if the problem is that we can't see around a sign, I will tell you that I call myself a victim, because I don't see anybody else being asked to do so. But almost every single year, we take up our tape measure, my volunteers and I, we go up there and we measure what the current regulation is from an intersection, from the shoulder of the road, and we put our sign up. And invariably, I get a call from Public Works and say, "Move that sign." And what do I do? I go out and I move it, and I move it an extra fifty feet away into the jungle. And what do I find? The next week, somebody of a different party comes in and puts his sign right there, where mine was. It's a matter of, and then his sign stays up there until the election. I have to move mine. It's the enforcement. If we don't, maybe we should just say, "Put the sign a hundred feet from the road, hide it in the jungle," if it's going to cause a traffic hazard. Let's fix the regulation, and let's not take away one of the least expensive way of campaigning for people who want to help our community, who have the ability and capacity, but don't have the money. Elections are too much about money already, and if we take away this ability to get a message in your face and your name out to the public in the least expensive way, all we're doing is making it more expensive to run for public office so that the average individual in our community, who is not well-heeled, who is not well-connected, who does not want to come in here and protect business interests, just wants to protect the public interest, and the public doesn't have a hundred thousand dollars to give him to win. I plead to this body to take a look at what we're doing here, and if there are safety issues with regards to the size of the sign, then move the sign from areas where they are becoming a public hazard, a traffic hazard, and give an opportunity to individuals in our community who don't have the connections to raise all this money, who don't have the fortune of coming from a family that have served in this body, who have had people build name recognition that they can enjoy, and give these people a chance. Mr. Speaker, if we continually restrict the way people can campaign and get the message out, the speech part, which is protected by the Constitution, we just said that the Supreme Court just came down, unfortunately, with a ruling that says corporations can now give almost unlimited amounts of money. And so what you're seeing is now super PACs, where they can, they're not limited by campaign donations, and now are able to form these super PACs within the United States, and they're spending four hundred, five hundred million dollars to back a candidate. You tell me how Tan Maria is going to be able to get the Chamber of Commerce and compete against the Chamber of Commerce who wants to support a candidate that's going to come in here and be that kind of candidate, not a Tan Maria candidate, and there's nothing wrong with that. What is wrong is then when this government passes law that gives even more power to that group of people by taking away Tan Maria's ability to support somebody, that that ten dollars that she can give can't go to a sign and be placed on a government easement for twelve weeks or six weeks. If we wanted, then cut it down to four weeks, but leave the ability to inexpensively campaign, Mr. Speaker. Because if you just take a look at what's happening on the national level, and what's, just take a look at the financial statements of people who have campaigned for office, who had zero name recognition to start with. Angel Santos would never have been elected if it wasn't for the grassroots organization. But I'm telling you, when Angel was running against somebody that had only had money, Angel was like number twelve, or number eight. And what's, you had a guy who sweated blood, sweat, and tears with the grassroots community, who got a dollar and ten dollars from Tan Maria Antun, who said to help him get elected, and you had somebody come along who did nothing in our community except spent two hundred and fifty thousand, and the guy finished number one. That's the power of money, and that's what we're trying to do, I think, with some of the changes we're making. We're trying to give more power to the people with money in the electoral process. All I'm saying, Mr. Speaker, is that this really is about democracy and fairness, and are we going to tilt it against the individual and the average Joe, or Jose, and Maria on Guam? Are we going to tilt it against them even more now with one way of inexpensively being able to campaign? Once again, I know that the regulations work, because they've applied it against me, and I don't complain, I just go out and move my sign. And we have now a new director at Public Works that I'm pretty sure she's going to call everyone, not just me, if my sign is out of regulation. And so what I'd like to see is maybe take a look at the regulation instead of where these signs can be placed. She's going to have a new target, a new favorite. But again, let's look at the regulations, and let's not reduce the free speech opportunity. Free in both free, as in protected speech, free in inexpensive, almost free, of these signs that give a fair shake to individuals who can't raise the money, don't have the connections, and have to depend on these signs to increase their chances of winning and serving our public. That's my perspective on this, Mr. Speaker, and some people may certainly disagree with it. But I think when we look at what has occurred in campaigning over the years here, we have continually tilted it towards those who have money against those who can't get access to that money. And I think this will do that again, when we don't have to do it in this, in terms of the problem we're trying to solve of public hazard because of the placement of these The simpler solution, the fairer solution, is limit where you can place them, rather than limiting the size. Thank you, Ensidus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. Senator Palacios, are there any other senators after Senator Palacios who wish to be heard on this bill? Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I completely share the sentiments of the last speaker. Two feet, rather, eight square feet, Mr. Speaker, actually is the size of a two feet by four feet, and with the whole plywood, actually, you can produce four signs. Now, it's not so much the size, but more so the ability and the right people to express themselves. To me, this bill really, Mr. Speaker, places unnecessary restriction on people's ability to promote their agenda, and I agree with the last speaker, it favors the incumbent. Every day, we are exposed, we meet people, people recognize us, the media cover our sessions and our proceedings, and this bill actually would make it very expensive for newcomers, because then, if they have the money or they have to do many, many, maybe fundraising, then all the money actually would go, because there's no restriction on the media advertisement. And, Mr. Speaker, that is very expensive. The least method of sending your message out to the people, to convince the people that you will be able to do your job, is through the signs, the flyers, the banners that's so portable, on the truck, and those things. Then this bill does not restrict big signs on private property, so those who are incumbents would still have the connection with private owners, because of your position, you'll be able to influence their mind and convince them much more easily than those who are newcomers in putting up your signs. And that then creates a relationship that would cause you probably to be indebted to that individual. It's just, it's just on and on and on. And I tell you, it's just, other political signs, Mr. Speaker, will continue to be allowed, and when I say other political signs, when we say political signs for running for government office, we tend to just focus on that. But any message out there placed by private organization, or nonprofit organization, or religious group, those signs are not regulated. That's an expression of their feelings and of their beliefs. Why can't candidates running for office tell the people through that medium, because it is the least expensive, that they are running and this is their agenda? And that's my concern, Mr. Speaker. It is just, it's an unnecessary restriction that it will create. There is no problem, Mr. Speaker, with the current rules and regulations, and probably that can be amended, but a two feet by four feet sign, it hardly goes anywhere, and it restricts people's ability, those without funding, those who are poor, but who genuinely want to serve. It will restrict them and deny the people of Guam actually the choice of having to consider these people. That's my concern, and again, I cannot say it any better than the last speaker on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Any other senators? Senator Guthard.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I want to identify with remarks of the previous speaker, but I also want to make an amendment to the bill, and I ask that legal counsel assist to ensure that it's in the right place, I'm not sure where it should be. But I'd like to amend the size of the sign, so that the size of the sign should be the size of a plywood. What is the size of a plywood? Four by eight. Thirty-two square feet, which is the size of a standard piece of plywood. And the reason I do that, Madam Speaker, is because of the cost, number one, and because I think that would be reasonable, that would be fair and balanced. You can see it, but it's not too large to be offensive. The current size indicated in the bill, it's very difficult to even see it, you'd probably waste your money to even have the posters printed or the billboards made. In addition, it costs a lot more money, because you have to then cut the billboards into four parts, and you're getting lots of money here, Madam Speaker, so we need to be reasonable with respect to this. So my amendment is to amend that section of the bill which specifies the size, for the maximum size of a sign, to be thirty-two square feet or the equivalent of the size of a standard piece of plywood.
On the amendment, which is on Page Three then, on this size, so you're saying that no political sign makes seat thirty-two square feet, on, yes, four by eight plywood. On the amendment, hearing no objection? On the motion, let me see, everybody has spoken. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the main motion? There being none, then I give the author to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I am appreciative of the discourse that this, that Bill 203-31 has invoked. One more time, the reason why this measure was introduced was along the lines of safety issues. Today, on our island, in our limited landmass, and anticipating the election campaign that has already kicked off in various villages, and with the types of wind and rain that we've had recently, with the road construction that does a great job of having us guess about which lanes are to be merged, the challenges of driving those lanes, particularly during nighttime, all of that, and as I thought about all of these environmental issues, and then with at least thirty people running for our house, for me, it was the idea of safety, and that's why this was introduced. Most certainly, this measure was not introduced to take away anybody's free speech. Signage is still allowed, there was no intent at all for anyone to say that you're not allowed. And honestly, as I've sat here for about nine or ten months now, I've had enough people say to me that incumbency doesn't work, because they're looking forward to getting rid of all of us. And so sometimes that works, and sometimes it doesn't. And so I'm certainly learning how to process all of these comments that come through. But there are always two sides, there's always different ways to look at a story, and, but most certainly, I have always stood for choice, that's real clear on my record, and speech is right up there. Decisions about what to do and how to do it, I definitely respect. So, Madam Speaker, I would just like to make it clear that, again, this measure was introduced for safety, for safety measures, and it's the idea of making sure that the drivers and the walkers, the bikers can all see as they drive up and down and around our village. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Yamashita. On the motion to send Bill 203 to the third reading file without any objections, so order. We're on Bill Number 204, and I recognize the author, Senator Tyron.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to move 204 to the third reading file.
Would you like to discuss it?
Yes, for discussion.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 204 is an act to require the Department of Parks and Recreation to conduct a review of the beaches and near-shore areas surrounding Guam. We all know that we're surrounded by beautiful beaches, and if the previous bill passes -- We all know that we're surrounded by beautiful beaches, and if the previous bill passes, it will not have any political signs in front of it. But because we're surrounded by these beautiful beaches, there's always an interest in, in water sports. There seems to be an increase in the activities, such as paddling, snorkeling, kayaking, and diving. And because of this increased interest and participation, there's a bigger need to assess the local beaches for safety reasons, and because of some tragedies and accidents that have happened, perhaps by assessing the safety of each of these beaches, we can identify what needs to be done to prevent further accidents. There are seventy-six public beaches, we've been informed by Parks and Recreation throughout the island, and what this bill will do is it will ask Parks and Recreation to do a comprehensive review of each of these public places. What we hope to find out is how much of a need there is for safety apparatus, or lifeguards for these particular areas, or even patrol. Parks and Rec says this is something that they already do, but what they don't do is put together a comprehensive report and submit that either to the legislature or to the governor's office. So what we hope to do is just have them compile all of the information that they already gather and submit it for our review, as well as the public's review. So when people are going around looking at public beaches, they would be able to identify which ones are safe for them and their families, and, and at the same time, it would allow Parks and Recreation to make an argument for these public beaches, and identify what resources needs to be placed at these areas, and how soon, and, and what exactly needs to be done to make these, these beaches safe. Now, in putting together their review, they'll also be able to work with other safety agencies, such as GPD, GFD, the Environmental Protection Agency, which also does a study of environmental hazards and pollution at our local area, our public beaches. So they'll be able to compile all of their information into one comprehensive report. Ultimately, we're hoping to improve the safety of our beaches for our public, and help Parks and Rec identify the resources that are needed. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion. There being none, so on the motion then to send Bill 204 down to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. I recognize Speaker Pangolinan on Bill Number 206.
Ms. Dusmasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 206-31COR be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss the bill.
Please, I proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 206 is pretty simple in its intent and its implementation, but I don't for a minute think that it's very simple to decide on this bill. Unless, of course, you agree with the existing policy of the government of Guam, that in all instances, if we are able to return lands that were taken from the people of Guam by the federal government, and returned to this government, that the land should go back to the original landowners. No ands, if, or buts. And it is property that is not encumbered, property that doesn't have an existing public use on it, there's no public building, so you can't return it, that complicates it, but raw land. And it is a chance for this government and this body to continue what we have been doing of righting the wrongs when it comes to the taking of lands by the federal government. And that this government, the government of Guam, will not be an instrument of the federal government to continue the injustice of those land takings by hanging on to properties that are no longer needed by the federal government, and have been returned to the government of Guam. There's where the simplicity comes in, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we all know the history of land takings on Guam, where the federal government prevented our people, the people of Guam, from access to expertise when their lands were taken. And that the federal government had to take land twice in order to make sure they did it right. They first took the lands before they made us U.S. citizens, and when they found out that that wasn't legally sufficient to hang on to those lands, they gave us citizenship so they can legally condemn the properties and take them. And they did not allow real estate appraisers, attorneys, to consult with local landowners when they took the properties. It's take it or leave it, and if you leave it, we'll leave the money in the bank, the ten cents an acre that we're paying you, and it's your fault that you don't take the money, and we are free and clear from our legal obligations. That's the history of land taking on Guam, and that's the history behind why this legislative body, the people's body, decided that we weren't going to be a part of that taking, and that injustice perpetrated on the people when it came to the takings of land. We all know and hear the most common sentiment expressed by the people of Guam when the lands were being taken by the federal government. Take my land if you need it to protect America, but return it when you don't need it anymore. And that's exactly what this property is. It is property that the federal government decided they don't need anymore. And are we now going to forget about the conditions that our people, that one singular condition that our people said when the federal government, even after, even after denying them access to expertise to make sure they got a fair deal? Take it when you need it for the nation's use, but give it back to me when you don't need it anymore. If we are going to allow this property to remain in the hands of our government and its instrumentality, the Guam Community College in this case, I'm not going to hide the fact of where the land is at now. If we're going to allow them to hang on to it, then we are continuing the injustice that the federal government perpetrated on our people. And I don't believe that that should be the function of this government, that I don't think that should be the policy of this government, it is not the policy. The policy is give the people back their land. And so this property, Madam Speaker, belonged to the people of Guam, individuals, individual families, who were uprooted from their land, and in instances presented in testimony, have no land, are homeless, they have no property to give to their children, because the government is hanging on to their property, and they've been hanging on to it for the last twenty years, and have done nothing with it, and they want to continue to hang on to it, while these families are living like nomads, with nothing on the horizon in terms of being able to leave something for their children. And they drive by this property every day, and it lies fallow. And yet, we haven't done what we have set out to do as a body when we pass the Ancestral Lands Act and the Excess Lands Return, is that we will not continue hanging on to the properties that rightly belong to our people, taken by the federal government. Esti na prinuponi, senora? Tanasiguru na tanoi tati itautau ni tanu nia, ni matsuli ni federat. Sa ani matsuli istisiana tonu, itautauta marekognisa namanisisita guihi na tempo para tasetbi imision. Iustodus unidus ani man gume gera, zanani munodzan zanisisita para uprotehihit. Imanayinata, makomprendi edzu. Za imas tat kiluna finu nia, ani man ma o amun ni tanu. Tuli zon usa anunisisita para unsetbi imision. Iustodus unidus nipurum protehihit, hita zanitano, zosiguru nagua pa stalu zabasta stigera. Lo anmunodzan unusa zesta tunisita, no izu totti ni tanu. Po se estana ilanyai federat, tunisisitas tasi. Maila zanugodi anoi totti itautauta, anoi totti igubetnu. Za ani talii nakulan kantidana tonu pofan mana la lu, tapasa ilai, na ileta angin mana la lu, tanu genu nigubetnu federat. Za timan manoi totti direktamente itautau, za igubetnu manoi, esti na gubetnu ti upuro kontinua gumoti itanui tautau para unoi totti ni tanu nia. Za estakantidana tonu maulikasta, tanoi totti itautau ani mari, ani mabira totti geni ni federat. Za magogo sa poa gui itautauta ni tanu nia, masia ma bendi ani man manoi totti lo isalopi ma uusa para inilalania zanifama gunia. Guaja sia ibu mendi, guaja sia man mapotti, zananao itodi familia. Po se esti na tonu nikino kerri geni ni esti na prinuponi. Ilanyai federat na estati anisisita. Za anoi totti igubetnu Guam, guatu gi zan GCC. Za quantus tempo sta goiti GCC tanu zatata bidananya. Po's maila zata tuli esti na tonu zatanoi totti itautau ni tanu nia. Sa man taitanu stasi siana familia. Tata para manoi ni rensian ni manayinaya sa gaigi guihi para reformagunia. Maila zatanoi zaumsinya, ufanmanoi ifama gunia, iirenshian iguelu nia. Angin gua para ma usa nezuna tonu po's polu zanfamilia odinisidi, ni magoid ga izu itanu zatanoi totti, kousinya. Ma usa ni hafa naplanu gua. Ti problema inolo, debi ni sia odinisidi ti hita zatitanota, titanu gubetnu sti, tanu I'm asking my colleagues to stand for the policy that is in place now, of not to continue the colonial injustice of the taking of these lands and the denial of these lands by the federal government. And that this body made a very clear statement, that because of the way the lands were taken from our people, and what they were paid for, dozen eggs and ten cents an acre in some instances, that we will not continue that, that we will make our people whole again whenever and with every opportunity given to us. And this is one opportunity that we have before us, to make our people whole, to make them one with the land, to give them the heritage and the inheritance from their family, from their parents, so they, as parents, can pass it on to their children. And I'm asking, and I'm pleading with my colleagues to consider continuing righting the injustices of the land takings on Guam with every opportunity given to us. And let's advance that cause one more time with this opportunity before us. Thank you, and Sidusmasi.
You're welcome, Speaker Pangolinan. On the motion, I have Senator Tom Adap.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, earlier this week, I got a visit from the president of the Guam Community College lobbying, of course, that I, for my vote, to keep the land with GCC. And, and of course, the rationale was that they are on the verge of reaching an agreement with the Guam Power Authority, for which Guam Power Authority is going to lease that property to be able to basically undertake its renewable energy project on that property there. And that then, from this lease to the Guam Power Authority, the revenues that they generate can then be used by the Guam Community College to then support their plans to further grow the, the infrastructure on the campus, and, and provide the other academic programs that they have. On the other hand, of course, the Guam Power Authority also came in during the public hearing and testified against the bill, for the very reason that they've got something going already, they're in the midst of discussion with GCC to lease that property. During the public hearing, one of the board members from GCC made the argument that the land should be kept under the ownership of the Guam Community College, because the Guam Community College can do these great things with that property for the good of the whole, as opposed to if you gave it back to the family that owns it, it would only benefit the, those family members that, that will stand to benefit from the property. I, I rise in support of the bill, notwithstanding, you know, the, the arguments about if it's kept under GCC, they can do things with it to benefit the bigger part of the community. And it appears that, first of all, the fact that, that land has been sitting fallow for the past twenty years, and now we're just on the cusp of getting something to do with it, it seems like it comes down to the argument is, here's finally, we've got some identified user for that property, and GCC wants to continue to be the landlord for that property to receive the revenues. On the other hand, you've got the original landowners who are stepping forward and saying, we want our property, and we'll do with it, either giving it out to our families to build homes, or they can form a trust and lease it out, be the, be the landlord that will lease it out to the Guam Power Authority, and they will get the, get the lease revenues. It seems that the debate comes down to who should, who, who should this body decide who should be the landlord for that property? And in my mind, I, I guess I would always fall on the side of your original landowner. There's nothing that would stop the original landowners, as I said, from basically, you know, then continuing the discussions with the Guam Power Authority, to be able to support the renewable energy projects that GPA wants to do. And I'm sure for GPA, it doesn't really matter to them whether GCC is their landlord, or whether the original owner of the property is their landlord, as long as they get the property. In fact, in one of the contracts that was let out by the Guam Power Authority for, for a renewable energy power plant, the winning bidder actually went out and rented property, leased property out in the Talafoco area from a private property owner, so that they can build their project. So the same thing could happen here, wherein then GPA, or any business entity, can go and lease that property from the original landowner. There's, there's certainly nothing- There's certainly nothing keeping them from doing that. I guess you just provide the right incentives and I'm sure, I'm confident that the landowners will be able to arrive at a rational business decision. But it really comes down to, should we give, should the new land, should the landlord remain as the GCC or should we give it back to the original landowners and let them deal with it as they see fit? And so, on that basis then, I think that the land should be returned back to the original landowners. And, and for that then, I rise in support of Bill 206. Thank you.
On the motion, I recognize Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is really a hard one for me. And I have a lot of respect for all the folks that lost their land and really should get their land back. That's not a dispute with me. But I am concerned about the Guam Community College. I believe, Madam Speaker, it was this legislature that authorized that land for the Guam Community College years ago. And yes, while it is true, they have not been able to develop it over the years for various reasons, and I assume much of it deals with finances. With the coming on board of a new president at GCC, a very creative, strategic thinker and planner, who's been able to leverage monies in different ways to help expand the community college, this has become part of their master plan. This has become part of a way for them to generate revenue, to continue the expansion of the community college and the various programs and activities that train our young people and our adults for good jobs. Oh. Clarification here is Department of Defense gave them the land. Fine. But Madam Speaker, I want to know, what is this legislature going to do to assist GCC? Because I don't see anything in this bill to address this. This bill may address the concerns of the original landowners. But are we just going to set GCC aside and said, too bad GCC, you're out of this? What are we going to do to help equalize this a little bit? If the good sponsor can give me an idea, I'd like to know.
Senator, you yield to the question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the bill has a provision that all of the property that gets returned to the original landowners, all of the real estate taxes on the improvements of the, on that property are now dedicated specifically to GCC. So if the, if they build a large development in their houses, whatever, all the real estate taxes assessed on the property and the improvements will now go and be dedicated to GCC for their use.
Senator, did he answer your question?
Well, that helps, but I have one more question. Do we have any idea of any timeframe when something like that would actually occur? Where GCC could actually see some revenue from this?
Who would you like to address that question to?
Well, I think this one is to everybody, in fact, Madam Speaker. I really am concerned because as all of us know, because I attended that hearing. And we learned about GPA's plans and their negotiations with GCC to lease that property for an alternative energy site which would quickly generate revenue for the college to be able to expand its programs and get our people trained and so forth and so on. So in fact, what this bill would do, if this works out, it would simply substitute the landlord to the private family members who would get the land back rather than GCC. Okay. But I'm not sure, Madam Speaker, and I don't know because I don't have the data before me and I can't project how long it would take for the original owners to build the property up, to generate real estate taxes for GCC. But I think we need to think about this a little bit more and do more to satisfy the needs of GCC. Because they really will be losing out on this if this bill becomes law. It may be helpful to, of course, the original families, original landowners. And that's fine. But it will be at the expense of GCC unless this legislature can do something more definitive to help them. And that's what I'm looking for. Because the provision in the bill, although it references GCC and real property tax, that's far off in the future. Here they have an action plan now, an agreement that they've worked on with Guam Power Authority that will immediately generate revenue for the college. So I'd like to hear some discussion on this. Because I think this is the hang-up with the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Guthertz on the motion. Senator Palashis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, that was my, it was point of inquiry, but that was answered by the author, that's section five, page three, that all real estate taxes and improvement on those, all the taxes actually would be dedicated to GCC Foundation. And so that's clarified. So the other question relative to this is that to the author is, what is the size of this and, you know, the approximate maybe potential revenue for the Guam Community College? So that, you know, members of this body and the people of Guam can actually see that GCC is not completely removed from benefiting. If the author can just give a, you know, a fairly reasonable estimate.
Speaker Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there are two parcels of property. One's about 400 some acres and the other one's 200. So I think the total acreage on this would be somewhere in the neighborhood of little over 600 acres of property. And depending on the assessment, of course, there's the assessment on just the raw land so that once a property is, is transferred tidal and all of the landowners have access to the property and probated, then immediately taxes are assessed on the raw land itself. And then any development, construction would also include then taxes on those constructions. In addition, of course, Madam Speaker, you know, that would be, depending on how, how fast the properties are probated, that revenue would go in. I, the assessment, I believe, is about half a percent. Or maybe it, no, it's now point something, something on 92% of the assessed value. So we don't have a calculation on that in terms of the property, but there is immediate opportunity for some revenue. And then whenever properties are developed, it will continually do so. So it could range anywhere from, you know, beginning, I would not hazard the guess, I could probably go back and get what properties are assessed in that area and give an answer, but there will be fairly quick cash flow revenues to the Guam Community College under this proposal.
Senator Palashis?
Madam Speaker, but just on the role, you know, just undeveloped completely, the minimum, if it's a 600 acres, I don't know the percentage, just half a percent?
It'll be 600 acres times four, 4,000, 4,000 an acre. 2.8 million acres, I mean, square meters. 20, $20 a square meter, $30 a square meter, $40 a square meter. 2.4 times another. So the property could be valued anywhere between 20 and 50 million, maybe. And so at 10%, it's 5 million, at 2%, it's 1 million. So at point 2%, it's 200,000, somewhere. So it'd be somewhere in that, that's all you.
I'm satisfied. At least, at least we're talking about six figure then. That's, so it gives us an idea, of course, that that is what would still be guaranteed, of course, to GCC. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Palashis on the motion. Senator Rodriguez, you're under recognized.
Thank you very much. Speaker Wampat, thank you. I rise in support of Bill 206 dash 31. And, you know, Madam Speaker, just listening to the author and listening to our other colleagues here, one very critical issue here that this bill highlights is for this body to honor the policy of returning land to original landowners every time we have that opportunity to. And as a freshman and, you know, as a, you know, coming from the younger generation and there's others here in this room who I consider also coming from that generation, Madam Speaker, at least for myself, I want to make sure that we correct the wrongs that have been done with the land takings, the lands that have been taken away from our people. And I know the, the argument about what this may do to the Guam Community College. However, Senator Ada articulated that very well, that if this discussion was still to be continued about GPA possibly moving forward with their plans to to use that property for a solar farm, then this discussion could still continue with the original landowners. And so the other provision of this bill that states that the taxes that would be derived, the real, the real property taxes will be designated to the Guam Community College is another demonstration of, of an attempt to show that we're not leaving out GCC. GCC is still part of the equation and still being taken care of in some way, in some form. And so I asked my other colleagues here as well, Madam Speaker, to, to continue that policy, the policy of this government, to continue that principle of ensuring that the wrong that has been committed by the taking of our lands of our people, our return, that we as lawmakers here at every opportunity ensure that that is protected. And Madam Speaker, I have one question that I'd like to ask the author if he would yield. Section three states that the above mentioned property shall be zoned agriculture. And so I just want to know if, if GPA would want to continue, continue the discussion on a solar farm, would that be a problem or would that still be, you know, is that, is that zoning still going to be possible for that type of activity?
Speaker Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Well, I figured since it was going to be a solar farm, it should be agricultural. No, Madam Speaker, the rationale for zoning it agricultural is that, of course, the property is unzoned at this time. And so we don't know what the families may want to use the property for. And so to give it zoning so that it can begin the process of probates and all that. And then if they want to rezone, they'd have to rezone. They could come down to this body for a rezoning like, like we did with the Punta Dos Amantes and do a zoning plan for that area with land management, if that was the decision of how best to achieve that. But it gives a base zone so that the property does have a specific zone rather than being totally unzoned and then the families can't even do anything at all with regards to the use of the property. So if it was going to be an industrial use, then, then a new zoning would have to be granted. And so that would be the process.
Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And so, you know, I don't intend to make any changes or make an amendment. However, I'd just like to, to add that I don't know how far these discussions are with GPA, GCC on the, on the solar farm. And so in the essence of time, you know, I'm just, I'd just like to state that if, if we're very close to that, if GCC is very close to that arrangement with GPA, then it would just, you know, kind of make sense that we include that in some way or state that, you know, this is a possibility for that property.
Would you, would you like then to, and of course you have to ask Speaker Panglinen to set this aside and make a phone call and come back to this?
Madam Speaker, I think that we should proceed because some of the families may not be want to, want to be part of that. And if we gave them a zoning, it may be inconsistent with what they may plan to do with it. And so I think that the opportunity for the rezoning is fairly easy for this body to, once the plans are firm, then we know exactly what use it's going to be. And we could, we could deal with that from, from, once that is finalized.
Fine. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
Sidhuus Masih, Madam Speaker, and Manana Sidhuus, good morning. I, Madam, Madam Speaker, as, as one of my, one of the hats that I wear in this legislative body is, as majority whip, is to try and get the feel of where bills need to go if, if our colleagues have some concerns in support or not in support of a particular bill. And in this case, as I was looking over the bill, I, I was talking to my good colleagues on the other side of the aisle. And we were talking about how do we take something that, that we believe when, when property is not utilized by the government should be returned back to the original landowners or if we receive property back from the federal government? The, the vision and the mission was to make sure that there was a process that would make, that process through the ancestral land trust to make the property go back to the original, original landowners. And that was a mechanism that was done many years ago. And I know that a lot of my colleagues in the House were, were part of making that happen. And as I was talking to my good Senator, my good primo Senator Duñez, and, and we were asking, where do, where do we want to go with this bill? And how do we want to, to take this knowing that there's over 600 acres of property? There's over 60 families that, that have been waiting for this property for many years. And we understand the intent of the good author from Baragada to, to, and his vision to making sure that this property goes back to the original landowners. I guess my question would be right now is, is, could there be any kind of negotiation or mitigation between what is already existing in, in present law today that gives the opportunity for the Guam Community College to, to lease that certain portion and not all the property and then give some of the property back to the original landowners? Could that be a form of, of something that this august body can look at? And I bring that up to, to mind, Madam Speaker, is because I know that I wasn't here for the public hearing, I wasn't here for all the testimony. And my apologies, but And my apologies, but I want to make sure that as we as policymakers believe in our heart that if property is to be returned from the federal government to the people of Guam, that first intention was if it wasn't going to be used for the government to build upon and, and make things work, then it had to go back to the original landowners. So my question, I think, would ask the, the author of the legislation, was there any time in all these proceedings, that past, present, and proposed future, was there any negotiation, I guess, to carve out portions? And I know that a good Senator, my primo, Chris, Senator Duñez, had probably the same concerns with me on, on this issue. So if I can ask the good Speaker?
Speaker Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Is at any time during the negotiations, were there any part of at least just taking portions out and giving it to GCC, and then the remainder of the property go back? Or was it the intent that all 600 acres would go back to the original landowners? Knowing that we have, knowing, Madam Speaker, that we have existing law today that, that, that talks about GCC working closely with GPA to build upon this... 31, 30, 30... 200... Be, a, a, the land be designated to GPA under Public Law 3199?
I think...
Can we take a minute?
Yeah, I think there was, I think there was language, I know, in the Rules and Rigs. No, it was the Rules and Rigs, and there was a section there, but they are supposed to come back to the legislature. We'll take a brief recess.
...
The legislature's back in session. Senator Munia Barnes, you still have the floor.
Sidhu Smasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me that brief recess so that I can consult with the author of the legislation. And I just want to say, because of that, I've been able to share with him my inquiries in reference to existing public laws and, and what the mission of GCC is with, with, with how they want to proceed with the land at hand. So with that being said, I will continue to hear what my colleagues have to say on this issue. And, and I just thank you for giving me this opportunity. I do want to note for the record, Madam Speaker, that it was brought to my attention that, and I know it's not a personal conflict for myself, but that one of my, my chief policy research analysts has shared with me that this is his grandparents' property. So with that, I'll just reserve further comment.
On the motion, Senator Frank Blas Jr., you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, for the record, and I just, you know, before I present my, my testimony with regards to, to the bill before us, I need to disclose that my family is part of this property that, that is actually being looked, looked at. Now, whether or not I'm going to have personal gain on it and everything, that's, it's a huge piece of property. I don't know how far down the line, but I know that the family does own, owns some of the property in that area. That said though, Madam Speaker, and I also want to preface this by, by saying that I too was visited by the president of the Guam Community College and asked to be able to support this piece of legislation. And admittedly, at first, I, you know, I, I felt that this is something that, you know, a, a good collaboration between the Guam Community College and, and the Guam Power Authority, and that, you know, for the good of the whole, a great number of people, that a number of people would be able to benefit from, from the, from the agreement. With that said, Madam Speaker, and I, and I listened intently as the author presented and his, his opening remarks to, to the bill. And there's, he makes a point, and a point that I think that we, we cannot forget, that we've got to go back 60 some odd years and just how the property and the ownership of the properties came to be. There could be an argument as to whether or not the governor of Guam owns that property to begin with. And people would argue, but there's law. There's law that substantiates, there's law that backs it up. That's Western law. What about the law that existed prior to the war? What about the agreements that existed prior to, the agreements that exist today? What about those? And what about happening to the, what about the opportunities that we can provide to the people who originally owned the land? To be those individuals that the community college and the Guam Power Authority themselves can go and, and negotiate these agreements with? 600 acres, that's a lot. And albeit, you know, the... And correct me if I'm wrong, but that seems like a pretty huge solar farm, if that be the case. And, and maybe I can ask the, the author of the legislation to yield if he knows whether or not, are we, does, does GCC intend, or is the full 600 acres a part of this, this agreement between GCC and GPA?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I will. Madam Speaker, let me, I misspoke here a little bit on the acreage because I was confusing with another parcel that still is not within GCC's control, but slated to be returned to original landowners. The property is, are, there are two parcels. The first one is a 252-acre parcel, and the second one is a 61-acre parcel.
61, I thought that's what...
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure.
It was a 250 and a 61. There's, up the road, there's another 400 acres that will be returned. I don't know the size of it. I do know that there's a conceptual plan at this time with regards to the development of the, of the solar farm there. I, I don't know the coverage. Earlier, I was informed by one of my colleagues that it may be only be a 20-acre farm. But I'm, I'm not definitively aware of the actual size of what they're planning.
Well, and I thank, I thank good author for that, you know, because 20 acres, 60 acres, 600 acres, it's still land that at one point in time, many, 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 many years ago, belonged to some, some family members. So, you know, Madam Speaker, if you, and I know that there's, this body is right now struggling between... And I don't think that, that it's the full intent of anybody, any person in this body to deny individuals access to, to property that is rightfully theirs. But at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, we get maximum use of the land. And I want to put trust and faith in those individuals who own the property, that they're, they're, they can, they can continue, or there, there, there could be a continued process of which a negotiation for a lease. So that it is, in fact, win, 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 all the way around. And I want to end by saying that, you know, I appreciate the deliberative process that we have in this body, and that there's a recognition, and to no fault of anybody, because, you know, everybody has got a vested interest, you know, in, in legislation that is, that is considered by this body, that people do come and, and provide information that is necessary to make an, to be making an informed decision. And with that, I think that as we continue this process, and we continue this discussion, there's more information that will be made available to us so that a vote for or against this issue will be made with all the best information possible. And so while I want... And so while I want to see, and I like the project and the collaboration that is occurring between the Guam Community College and the Guam Power Authority, and I recognize that there was previous, for lack of a better term, agreements, if you will, with regards to the utilization, how this property was going to be utilized. And despite the fact that for many years, that the Guam Community College, although it held it in its inventory, could have, for many reasons, not been able to move forward in some of the projects that they wanted to have on those pieces of property. And maybe if they did have, move on this thing, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. But what we have before us today is whether, whether this body needs to decide as to whether or not we should give this land back to the original landowner, and it is through the original landowner that the negotiations and the agreements, to be able to put this solar farm or whatever, or however the Guam Community College and Guam Power Authority would like to see the utilization of this property, I don't see anything in this legislation that says that the solar farm or that these plans will no longer exist. And I appreciate also the fact that there's a mechanism to be able to move the incomes derived in as far as the real estate taxes and its improvements to assist the Guam Community College. A little bit leery, though, in as far as, is, is the amendment, or is the proposal as proposed in the bill, is it sufficient to be able to do that out, or do we have to make sure that there's specific lot numbers to that? Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, you know, that that way it doesn't get caught in that mire of other stuff. So, again, Madam Speaker, I see where, and I see where many of this body still have that, still have, you know, not made sure in their minds as to which way to go on this thing. I, for one, can say that while I was leaning toward one way in the, in the beginning, I actually see, and I, as a result of the conversations and the presentations that were provided, the rationale to the bill. And I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this thing. And I'm going to need to consult with legal attorney with regards to whether or not, again, I had mentioned earlier that in the interest of, that my, my family does own property within this subject area. I don't know now, and maybe we need to see at the exact maps as to whether or not there is, and I'll check with legal counsel on that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Blas. On the motion, if there anybody else would like to speak. So, Speaker Panglinen, you have an opportunity to close?
Thank you very much, Sidhuus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for their deliberation on this matter and the questions that they've raised, which have given me an opportunity to clarify some of the terms and provisions in this bill that does not abandon GCC. You know, the greatest concern that GCC really has is, there's two concerns. One is, of course, money, that they can make a little bit of money from the development here, but it's their program. You know, they want to establish apprenticeship programs, they want to establish training programs. They, basically what they want to do is build a new experimental laboratory for the teaching of clean solar technology energy as a program at GCC, and develop the skills to grow this industry on Guam. Well, you know, Madam Speaker, GCC doesn't need this property to do that. GCC can do exactly what it's doing with regards to this program with GPA at this new $300 million contract that GPA's just awarded, notice of intent to award, to build a brand-new solar farm in Talafoco. So to say that GCC needs this to develop new programs, you know, expand its teaching opportunities, they don't have to make that investment in that infrastructure themselves. GPA's got a contractor coming in here who's going to develop this from the ground up, $300 million. Just require GPA to say that as part of this contract, you will develop with GCC and partner for an apprenticeship program at your facility. Why build a facility at GCC and duplicate what the private sector investor's going to do? It'll even save GCC more money, it'll give them more expertise, because these people are going to bring in their expertise to service and stall, operate, maintain. So they have that opportunity. GCC is doing that now with the Guam Trades Academy. Do you know that GCC is taking federal grants for their use and giving it to the Trades Academy so that Trades Academy can now run programs on behalf of GCC and partner up with them? They can just take that model, transfer it to this new contractor with GPA, and they have a $300 million campus for clean energy programs, and GPA can just put that in their contract. If GPA and GCC are indeed solid partners in the development of programs to support this skill, then GPA can thus, before it awards it, and I'll write them a letter today, saying, include this as part of your contract. That way, we don't have to make the investments ourselves, it's part of the investment that will be paid for by us, anyway, because we're going to be paying for that contract, whether GCC and GPA says, like it or not, that's coming out of my pocket and your pocket when we pay our power bill. Why duplicate it here and spend more of our scarce government resource to duplicate something that we can do right there? That may even be a better program now, because you know these guys are going to come in and put the money there. GCC still has to find the funding to build this conceptual plan that they have. They still have to go get federal grants, or GPA has to invest there and invest there. Why do it like that? So I don't think that we're leaving GCC behind, because we're seeing somebody that is ready to move, that has the money to make the investment, and all it is, is now GPA saying, when you do that, I've got a partner here that will help you train your employees by giving them access, by tailoring a small portion of this contract to say that we will have an apprenticeship program, and GCC can provide the academics, you provide the on-hand technical laboratory for them to work in, and, and we're done. We don't have to go get grants. Mary can do other things that she's very good at. And I can see her, that she says, oops, I think I can, I think I can implement that plan. She is creative, and she deserves all the credit that she's been able to, all the credit of what she's been able to do with the resources she has at her disposal. And this land is not necessary to that mission of GCC. This, if there was no other way, maybe, but we already know that she has a ready-made laboratory that will be paid for by GPA, and it's just that partnership now that says, let's just move it there. So I really believe that we will not harm GCC in terms of the program that it wants to establish to develop our workforce to support clean energy and solar technology skills in the future. It's there, it will be there, and it will even be easier for GCC to implement it, because they don't have to go build the infrastructure and get the money and find the money to develop that infrastructure, because somebody else is paying for it. And then, Madam Speaker, we come to, are we going to do the justice that our people deserve with regards to their lands that were taken under very, very harsh circumstances? And if we continue to allow our government to hold this land, then we are continuing to perpetuate that injustice perpetrated on our local people now by ourselves. We are now the ones perpetrating and continuing that injustice. Let that not be the case. Let us continue the record of this legislature that when it has the power and the opportunity to right some of the injustices of the past, that we do it, and we don't become an instrument of this federal government to continue those injustices by hanging on to the lands taken from our people when they rightly and justly deserve that it be returned to them. Thank you, Sidhuus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Speaker Panglinen. On the motion to send Bill Number 206 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We only have ten, we only have ten minutes, so we're going to recess until 1:00 this afternoon.